Decision later.
Yes, it's completely up to you and your contract. We got a quote from Fisher boss. I'm not sure if I should say aloud the quotes or how this works, but yeah, it's quite a difference.
Unfortunately, it doesn't matter. They do have to provide the transportation for these types of trips because we do have a contract with them for...
Oh, okay. So you can't go outside that contract at all?
Unless they cannot accommodate it, the trip dates, we are legally locked into using them.
They weren't accommodating.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that the price difference is substantial between going up, we would have to take four separate vans to get up on that Saturday, and then the bus coming home.
Yeah, they weren't, if you were using the word accommodating, they're not being accommodating.
I mean, the bus coming home for 24 of us would be $600 just to come home, where there's another offer on the table that would do round...
Fisher bus basically quoted us $1,400 round trip, and this Lucini bus company out of Westport, Mass., they have the contract with Roger Williams University, URI, Bridgewater State University, they quoted us $225, and they were going to donate the ride home for free, just a tip to the driver. So it's $75 an hour for the ride to Logan, everybody in one bus together, everyone, all the luggage, one bus together, $75 an hour. A man named John Murray that I grew up with, he's a driver for them, I called him, very reputable company, they have $3 million insurance policy on their buses, which is double than the average insurance policy for bus companies, and they said they would charge us $75 an hour. Their garage is in Bridgewater, so they would start charging when they picked up the bus in here, probably half hour, 45 minutes, I guess, and then up to Logan, drop the children off, one shot, and then back to Bridgewater, and that's the fee. And they have, the buses are on GPS, they show you the receipt, that they actually did those exact miles and that amount of timeframe, they gave us a quota of $75 an hour as friends of some of the kids in the group. And then John Murray himself, he's traveling on the first part of our trip, so he couldn't do it, but on the return part, he will be back, and he said that he would donate his time to pick us up on the Wednesday night, no charge, and I just said, obviously, a tip for him, but no charge on the return trip. So we're looking at a $1,400, $100 quote from Fisher as opposed to max $400. And that's, it's totally up to you, I don't want to ruffle any feathers or anything, but the kids have been, you know, fundraising like crazy, trying to get every penny to make, you know, make the best value out of their dollars.
I would like to look at their quote and make sure that it ties into our contract for these types of trips. It seems a little bit high, just from running the numbers real quick, but I can't make a decision tonight on that. I would like more information forward.
Right, we just knew that this is our last meeting, your last meeting before they leave next Saturday, so we said, you better run in there and see what you have to say.
I mean, could the school committee leave it at the discretion of Mrs. Albinaz?
Well, actually, my, I had a similar thought. I think that this committee has approved the trip. The details, the transportation, et cetera, how the trip is managed, the chaperones, all of that falls within the responsibility of the administration. So what I would suggest to the committee is that we give the superintendent and the director of business and finance discretion to consider what's being proposed. If we have a contractual obligation, perhaps, if we have a contractual obligation to Fisher, and that's confirmed, then we have no choice. Perhaps some negotiation with Fisher in view of this, if we cannot use this company. So I would suggest we leave it to you to try to work this out between now and next Saturday. I realize it's a vacation week, but I assume you'll be in part of that time anyway.
Would you like to email me the quote, Mrs. Giliducci, and then I'll look at it?
Sure, we'll do that. We'll do that to you.
Thank you for allowing us to support you.
Could I have a motion to refer this issue to the superintendent and the director of business and finance?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any discussion? The absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your...
All right, so now, back, I just had a quick comment. The form, this form of agreement is, in many ways, the same agreement as the agreement that the regional school district has had with Berkeley for special education transportation for several years. So I think the form of the agreement is fine, it's already been approved by the Somerset Committee. Are there any questions from the committee about it?
Lindsay, what's the term of this agreement? Is it yearly? Will we be reviewing this on a yearly basis?
No, it's just indefinite period unless there's revisions that are necessary based on student population transportation needs, et cetera.
That's why I ask, because not knowing what the needs are going to be on a yearly basis...
Right, we would adjust it.
Well, there's a, it's indefinite, except that either party can give notice by April 30th of any year to terminate as of June 30th, and it can also be terminated by mutual consent.
And who has, if there's, if there's need in both areas, is there one region or area that would have per se on the use of the bus over another, or is it, is it just something that would work out on a year-by-year based on...
We try to accommodate as much for both districts as we can, if the times align. We use three of our vans, but all of the in-district transportation to the high school, and then we use those same three to do two other tiers for Millin Elementary. That's, that's how I bet, I feel like it's best utilized, but if something changed where we didn't need them for the high school, we would address that, and we'd be coming back to you with an amendment to this.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement related to transportation of special education students and maintenance, as proposed.
One second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any further discussion? The absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have the signature page for the agreement, so I ask everyone to sign it before we leave this evening. Next item we have is the electricity supply contract.
We recently went out to bid again for our electrical supply needs for the high school. We received a bid back, these are the bid results from, I believe it's 12 different vendors who are the large vendors that would supply electricity, as far as what those rates would be, the terms of the rates, 12 months, 24 months, 36 months, and 48 months. The lowest bidder came in at, with Hudson Energy, at 11.19 cents per kilowatt hour for a term of four years. This is compared to what we're actually paying right now, which is 12 cents, well, 12 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. This proposal is estimated to save approximately $95,491, excuse me, $95,491 over the term of four years, if we go with this vendor versus what we're currently paying. We can always look, if there is a reduction in the supply rates over the term of four years, we can reduce the supply rate from 11 cents down if we can get a more competitive rate with this supply company. So essentially, what happens is, we have our electrical bill from National Grid, we have charges for delivery and distribution on that bill, we also have a supply charge bill, so if you look at your electrical bill for your own home, you'll see that there's a specific line charge for supply needs. What we're doing right now is we're paying that directly to National Grid because our current, our prior contract expired in October, so we were paying about 9.5 cents per kilowatt hour then. So essentially, instead of paying what we are paying National Grid at 12.46 cents per kilowatt hour, this would save us about a penny and a half per kilowatt hour, which would result in savings to the district. I would recommend moving forward with this at this point in time. I know that the last time we did this, Mr. Pierce had some questions on the actual contract with the supply company, so I'm asking the committee to allow me to enter into contract negotiations with Hudson Energy to lock in this rate of 11.19 cents per kilowatt hour for a term of 48 months.
What I was gonna, since we don't have the contract, and I would like to see it before we actually sign it, that you authorize Mrs. Albinaz and I to negotiate the final contract language with their, the proposal, the contract that was proposed the last time had other language beyond simply the quote, and so that's my suggestion, that she and I look at the proposed contract that's presented and you authorize to accept it. It's reasonable?
Second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any further discussion? Absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next item, budget transfer requests.
You have a three-page document in front of you with eight budget transfer requests for the third quarter of the fiscal year, January 1st to March 31st. There are some needs in here that need to be addressed, and in such, we need to transfer funds to accommodate these needs. The first one relates to some electrical work that we had to do at the front office security buzzer here. There was a need to install a second buzzer in the front office, which required our electrician to come out and install a new wire for that. We also had some ballasts that we had to replace in one of the classrooms, which required our electrician to come out. That is a transfer of $2,000 into the electrical work line, and it's coming from our special education tuition line, which does have some circuits in it for the year. Second one relates to a salary adjustment. There was an error in the way we budgeted prior year, or, I'm sorry, the current year salary, so we need to correct that by transferring $750 into this superintendent salary line, taking it from the photocopier supplies admin line. That's number two. The third one is related to HVAC work. There was a lot of repairs that were needed specifically to the chillers and some thermostats, as well as the AC unit in the control room, specifically for the performing arts center. We also had some unexpected boiler work that needed some work done to that, so we are looking for a transfer of $2,140 into our heating and ventilation line, and also $1,110 into a boiler repair line. Those funds will be coming from the insurance line for the active employees, $3,250. If you have specific questions about the maintenance, I will defer to Mr. Campos because he is way more eloquent in describing what actually happened, so... Number four is related to faucet replacements in some of the students bathrooms in this school. We needed to replace some of them, and as a result, we had to have some plumbing fixtures purchased, as well as some maintenance done to the ice machines for the nurse, as well as the athletic trainer. So we're looking to transfer $2,860 into the plumbing line, and that will be coming from the custodial supply line, which has in excess of $2,860 left for the year.
Why would the faucet replacements require, does that do with, they're not functioning under with the generator?
No, that's to do with vandalism.
Okay.
Okay. Number five is a request to increase our tutoring, homework club slash Saturday school line by $7,700. The tutoring is higher than anticipated with the, I believe they call it the flex program here at the high school for the after-school students that require additional support, as well as the copier at the high school line. We're having significant issues with the Toshiba's that were purchased as part of the building project. They are becoming end-of-life sooner than we would have liked, so we've had several visits by the repair person to come out and fix them, almost in every single content area. So we need $4,000 transferred into that line, and I'm sorry, we need $7,700 coming into the tutoring line. Those funds are coming from various textbook lines, as well as the coordinator's salary line, because there was a delay in hiring our performing arts and music content coordinator until January of this year.
Do we have service contracts on the copiers, or are those just whatever service calls we have as we go?
We do have them on the larger sevens, the larger copiers. We do not have them on the Toshiba's, and we're at the point where we need to make a decision as to whether we're going to continue to use the Toshiba's, phase them out, replace them with larger, better quality devices, lease those over the life. Those can last up to eight to 10 years, the larger sevens that we have. The Toshiba's are just not going to last, that's the moment, sort of, they're just being utilized, as, you know, the printers typically have been utilized, and it is a problem, specifically for the teachers who need to have print jobs done, and students who need to print, and it needs to be addressed.
Didn't we address the copy issue in the budget?
We did not, we removed the leases out of FY19's budget.
But just in defense of the building committee and all the technology committee of the building committee, these copiers were purchased with the expectation they were going to be low volume, because we expected that we were going to have a plan to go paperless, and before we go out and buy large, expensive copiers, at least from my individual perspective, we need to see the plan here at the high school to reduce paper use, both in terms, I mean, we bought one-to-one devices, we were told that the need for copying would be substantially reduced, would save us money on paper, it's greener, all those issues, and so we need to refocus on that issue. I would approve this, but we need to refocus on going paperless. Okay, go ahead.
Number six requires some transfer funds related to special needs transportation for out-of-district, to which, out-of-district students. We had two mid-year additional routes added due to unexpected outplacements. There is also one that is the homeless transportation, which has fluctuated in the past, also needs some funds transferred into it. So I'm asking that the special needs transportation have $27,500 transferred into it, and the homeless transportation has $2,400 transferred into it. Our school resource officer's salary ended up coming out higher than anticipated for this school year, $6,350. We also had two custodial retirements that we had to pay out sick time and pro-rated longevity that were not in the budget. That's $10,115. Those funds will be transferred from the content coordinator's salary line for the performing arts and music position, as indicated before. Number seven is another facility maintenance transfer. We did have some additional chiller repair work, specific to the sensors. We had to have some maintenance work done to the bleacher system at the, in the gymnasium, and we also had to replace some audio equipment in the distance learning center and performing arts center that were not fully functioning. That is coming out of the contingency line, $12,710. The elevator line, $1,880, we're going into, and the fire alarm repair, $3,000, coming from health insurance active employees, $17,590. Last one is related to a tuition outplacement. This is new, that we have a line called recovery rehabilitation tuition line. It's not categorized as special education, but it is tuition, so we want to categorically charge them in the lines where Dusty feels we should. So we've created the recovery rehabilitation tuition line for student, or students that need to attend these programs, so that is $11,026. We also have a shortage in our school choice tuition assessment. It's higher than what we had budgeted and what was published to us when we went through the FY18 budget process, so we need to transfer $22,500 into that line. These two lines will be coming from the special ed tuition line, $22,100, and the health insurance line, $11,426.
So the school choice tuition assessment, that's, those are students that have chosen to go to school other than our high school?
Yes.
And does that represent two additional students?
I don't have the final numbers on that, as far as the counts are concerned, versus what we budgeted. I can get those for you for the next meeting.
$5,000 ahead, somewhere in the fours, right?
That's about four students.
And the final numbers would be better.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are five, depends if they have...
If they have all the services.
Yeah.
Well, well, except if they're charter school students, we pay more than $5,000, don't we? Don't we pay $11,000?
Closer to that.
So we don't know whether these are charter school students?
No, these are school choice students. We have a separate line for charter school stations.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the committee? I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed transfers as set forth in Mrs. Albinaz's report.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Giliducci, excuse me, and seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Quarterly financial update. Mrs. Albinaz?
So this is, I printed you the FINSTAT as of the end of the third quarter. There are some color highlights on here that reflect the transfers that I had just gone through with you, mostly in pink. The green ones are where those shortages are located on this report. There was a deadline of February 26th for any new purchases, or actually a deadline for putting in requisitions for the entire high school, so there should be no additional expenditures coming in other than for enforcing things like maintenance repairs or some small things that the athletic department needs to adjust a purchase order for. So this is where we are as of the third quarter. We are going to end in a black. I don't anticipate any issues with ending the fiscal year in a sound situation. I didn't know if there was any specific questions on any lines on these, I know it's kind of a lot, but... At our June meeting is when I will be reporting on what the surplus will be for the end of the school year, and any applicable transfers necessary at that point.
Committee, you have any questions? Are there any questions on the monthly invoices? If they are not, please sign the warrants that are here before leaving, and does that complete the matters? If you had, Mrs. Albinaz?
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a report on student government day. That, you folks are here? Okay, so if you'd like to introduce yourselves and...
Well, I'm Michael Corrigan. If I may, just to, Mrs. Ferris has been taking students to student government day for...
About five years now.
Okay, and I know it's something that our local representatives in Senator are always asking, all representatives of school districts, if we're going to be sending students, and Representative Haddad is always, and Oral are always asking, you know, for some of the Berkeley students to attend, and Mrs. Ferris has been doing so. And I know each year, it's a, it's a little bit different, right? This year, I think it was the focus on...
Correct. Up to this year, actually, our students typically have been in the chambers, so they've either had a role as a rep or a senator. This year was a little bit different. They were actually Supreme Court justices. So this was a bit different, so we actually were at State House getting on Adams Courthouse. So Michael's going to speak to that, address what we had, what we did, or what they did, actually.
All right, so in essence, myself and Catherine Casey, who also went along with it, we were able to observe a model of the judicial process from the testimonials and hearings of legislative pieces to their introduction into the House of Representatives and Senate, where they give the testimonials and their fellow representatives and senators could hear it, they would eventually vote on it, but we didn't get to see that part because we were the justices. We went over to the John Adams Courthouse, where we got to meet some of the appeals court justices and the Supreme Court, and just learn about, you know, how their jobs work, how they go about understanding this legislation and interpreting its, you know, its relation to constitutional law to ensure that everything is going by due process, and, you know, it was a really interesting experience. We got to get a new perspective on the issue as a whole. I had a good time.
I had a good time, too.
How are the students selected? From what classes do they go, or not participate, was it just like essay that they apply to participate?
Correct. They actually apply to participate, and then we do a blind reading of, I ask them typically, ask them three questions about the democratic process, what they, what they see as problematic, possibly, in our system, what they see as something that's good in our system, and why they want to actually take this trip to the State House and participate in student government day. So actually, we had a few essays, and then we went through the essays as the department, social studies department, and then Catherine and Michael were selected to go, they both accepted. So this year, as I stated, they actually were Supreme Court justices, so they were able also to dress, they had, they wore the robes, and I did as well, because they weren't letting me out of there without doing it, too. So we have all the pictures, but they were able to actually sit in the Supreme Court justices' seats, and we were able to meet the Chief Justice Gantz, and then they also met two appeals court judges, and then clerk of courts, and then you actually sat down and had lunch with the law clerks, right?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations.
Aye.
So it was definitely, it was an interesting take on the judicial process as well, aside from the legislative process that we've been able to see in the past.
I think it's great.
So what all your years of practicing law did you, and we're here to wear the robes, he's already worn up on you.
Well, he actually was a law clerk for the Chief Justice of the...
He was a law clerk.
One day, the five, the five law clerks went into, went into the conference room and put on the robe and had our picture taken, so I have that as a memento. That's the extent of my exposure to wearing a judicial robe.
He's also going to Atlanta. Mr. Pierce, he's also going to Atlanta, representing Somerset Berkeley.
Great.
Well, congratulations, and glad you found it to be a worthwhile experience.
Aye.
And thank you for continuing that program. I think it's a really neat way to get civics, those lessons to our students, to experience it firsthand.
First-hand, it's awesome.
Were there a lot of other students from high schools around the state? I'm wondering how they shuffled through to have an opportunity to all sit in the seats of the justices.
Right. How they work, there were actually 100, about 190 schools there. You have actually an alternate, and you have a student, a rep. So the student rep automatically will take a seat in, if they're in the house. There are also constitutional officers, someone has the role of governor, lieutenant governor, et cetera, so, you know, they actually have, the lieutenant governor spoke, right?
Yes.
So they actually don't allow the advisors into the chambers anymore because there's so many kids now, and they have the alternates, so I watched it, it was a live feed. So typically, you've got about, probably about 375 to 400 students, and so the alternates are usually chosen to sit in the empty seats where they may not have representation.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on being... Congratulations on being selected. Next is the report of our student representative, Kara.
So, I have a few things. I feel like I've been here so long. But, so to begin with, we are having our eighth grade days coming up. Well, when I say coming up, I mean, not only for vacation, but it's coming up. And we're having Somerset. I haven't heard anything about Berkeley so far, but it's just three days where eighth graders come up from the middle school and they get paired up with one of the students from the Big Buddy Program, and they get to follow a student for a day. So, last year, I had a boy from Berkeley, and he came to all my classes, and then I took him to lunch, and this happens for all the students that come up. So, that's coming up soon. It's all run by Ms. Nass and the Gantz Department.
Sorry, when did you say that is?
After April vacation. I'm not sure these are dates. So, next, after April vacation, also coming up, our AP tests. So, I know a lot of the history teachers, they're having like the 6:00 AM review sessions, and all the classes are starting to finish up. So, that's just going to be happening after. And I know there is a lot of people, students this year, especially in grade, taking more than one test. So, we have the sign-up day. I'm pretty sure...it might have already happened, I missed it because I was on a field trip, but you pre-register, you sign up your stuff, and then you are just ready to take the test. So, that's coming up. And then, spring sports started. Our softball and baseball team are off to a great start. I know the softball team the other day won like 14 to 1, maybe. It was crazy. And we also have our tennis team starting and our track. I know there's many, many track kids. I think there's over 100 signed up for track this year, so that's a lot. And sorry if I'm forgetting any sports, but they all started. Also, today, I was at Bridgewater State because the Anti-Bullying Coalition, as well as the Somerset GSA and the Somerset Middle GSA, won an award. We presented...well, we submitted a PSA about bullying and inclusion, and the Somerset Berkeley ABC program came in third place. So, we got an award from the Mark Program. And I also won bingo. I have a T-shirt somewhere. I love bingo. Me and Eddie Rad won. And the Somerset Middle School got an honorable mention, so they got a trophy as well. So, that was pretty cool. Also, in the week, DECA is going to be going to Atlanta for the international conference. That's exciting. We are basically all fundraised, all the money, so it's...I think people stopped paying for their luggage and meals, but everything else, I'm pretty sure, is covered. Thank you. It was a lot of money, but we did it. Disney, the Disney trip for the music kids is occurring, too. They're leaving next Thursday, I'm pretty sure, so they'll be performing while they're down there. And that's exciting because all the seniors have been waiting four years to go on this. So, I can't go, but if I could, I'd be so excited. I'm going to Florida on Saturday, so it's fine. And there...this is like you go every four years, so this is like the trip for these students, and then the next four years will be flight. So, it happens every four years. And then, show choir just ended. We had our last competition, and we've gotten silver all year, which is really exciting. We did really well. I think this is the first year that we've gotten complete silvers and no bronzes. So, that was exciting. Our senior class trip, we'll be taking that, you know, not for a while, but we're going to Brownstone, we decided, and that will be taking place in June.
Where's Brownstone?
Um, Brownstone, I'm not sure where it's located, but that's where they've been going for the past five years, or not five years, past few years. It's an adventure park. It started with John Myron, and it's just stuck ever since. Also, college is coming up. The deadline for college is May 1st, so everyone's been deciding. Busy topic. And then, last, this last thing I have, is a problem we found. The senior Chromebooks, we have the Chromebooks that people had, like the school owned, and they're not...I want to say they're not very beneficial to our learning because they take so long to work. Just, it takes...okay, so I have an example. Today, in English, I had to leave to go on my field trip at 9:00, and I had from 8:30 to 9:00 to present, and it took from 8:30 to 9:00 to send out one Google form because it wouldn't load. It was just...it's just really hard to work with them, especially when we're trying to get things done on time and sent in to teachers. Some things don't connect to the internet, or it just takes so long to even Google or turn on. So, I think maybe looking into if these are going to stick and we're going to go paperless, something needs to be done about the senior Chromebooks because I'm pretty sure they're going to the freshmen next year. No, they're not. There's new ones, okay, then we're fine. That was just...I thought they were going to the freshmen.
Can I ask you a question? You haven't heard of those issues happening with the newer ones, have you?
No. I've only heard about those with the seniors. So, as long as we're getting new ones, everything's okay. And that's all I have.
Kara, we did have...do you know...is the reason battery-related?
Battery is an issue with them. They die after about one block of using them. If you use them straight for a block, they'll die. But I think the main problem, they're just very slow. I'm not sure because they've been used so much. I don't really know what the problem is, but that was...it doesn't...maybe it doesn't connect to the internet as well. I'm not sure.
Well, is this a universal problem among seniors, or is this isolated with certain devices?
All seniors have been having this problem. Some students are more. Like, I don't, for example, I don't use my Chromebook in school anymore because it's just...it's too much to try and use it and turn it all on. It just isn't worth it. So, some students are worse than others. Maybe they've got like older ones compared to newer ones, but I know this is a universal problem with the seniors Chromebooks. But if you're getting new ones, it's fine because we're almost done. We'll be okay for the last month. That's all. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
It's Kara.
So, spoon over. Superintendent's report.
Let me just slide over here a little bit. Actually, I can stand. I did want to share, Kara just mentioned about spring sports starting, but I've been sharing with you these numbers. So, Mr. Francis did share the spring 2018 participation compared to 2017. You can see for boys' spring sports, baseball, tennis, and outdoor track. Last year, we had 117 participants. As of the start of the season, we had 132 this year, gain of 15. In girls' spring sports, between softball, tennis ball, and outdoor track, we also saw a gain of 15 students over last year's participation. So, overall gain of 30 students in spring sports. And I know we've been looking at that all year long. Those numbers will likely, the 132 and 128, will likely drop a little bit. Students will always, over the course of a season, some will choose to quit, or maybe they become academically ineligible to play. So, the ending numbers are always a few students shorter than the beginning numbers, but they don't change by very much. All right. The...what I want to spend the most time on, and I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible, is giving you an update on the Massachusetts accountability system. Am I in your way if I were to? Sure. So, a number of us went to this presentation by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a few weeks ago, where they outlined all of the accountability changes that are taking place this year. Now, this is...2017 was the final year from the previous measures. All of the gaps that school districts and schools had to close always had a 2017 target. The Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, which replaced No Child Left Behind, that requires schools to have a new accountability system, or really the states to have one, beginning in 2018. So, this is the new program that the state is presenting to us and is implementing, beginning with this year's spring assessments. Just the main components of this. So, really, the highlights, it looks similar to the previous system, has a lot of similarities, but we also see some fairly significant differences, too. It continues to have a normative component where it will rank schools with a percentile, comparing schools and districts, well, really, the schools, to other schools and just where they fall within the 1 to 99 percent. And we all...every school also has individual targets, just as we had before, based on our achievement, based on our current growth, where should we be the following year and so on. The biggest change is that third bullet where it's really taking the lowest 25 percent of the population based on the previous year's average scaled scores in ELA and math. And that lowest 25 percent counts for half of a school's score. So, we'll see that in just a little bit. That's really the most significant component to it. The last bullet here, schools will no longer be categorized 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There's still going to be a categorization of schools. They just haven't determined exactly what the name is going to be. There's a placeholder in here that we'll get to. But the Rob Curtin, who presented this, who was one of the associate commissioners and a Somerset High School graduate, kept saying that it's really just a distinction without a difference. They're just calling it, giving it a new name. So, the timeline that the state has followed, it began in December of 2015 with the passing of ESSA, and this fall is that first rollout of this new accountability system. So, the indicators, what the federal law requires is that we continue to have a program that is based on academic achievement and growth. And graduation rates for high schools, so the Somerset Public Schools and any district that doesn't have a graduating class, that measure isn't there. There's a new component that's really focusing on English language learners. Schools need a cohort of 20 students for that to be a measure, for that to be an indicator. We currently don't have that number, so that's not going to apply to us just yet. It's just a matter of time before it does. And then, at least one measure of school quality or student success. So, what the state has determined, so on the left-hand side here on the indicators, you see those five categories, achievement, student growth, that graduation component of high school law completion, English language proficiency, and those additional indicators. So, just going down the right-hand side, just what I've talked about, between the ELA and math scores, those will continue to be that CPI score that we've...that I've shared with you in the past. Once high schools transition to the next-generation tests, then that will be changed to the average scaled score of that. But it's still going to be a measure of ELA and math. It's just going to be looking at a different component of those achievement numbers. We'll continue to have the ELA and math student growth percentiles. For high school completion, as I shared with you, I think it was our last meeting, it's really a combination of graduation rates and dropout rates, as well as that extended engagement, looking at the five-year graduation rate, returning of students who had previously dropped out and have come back. All of those are, will continue to be measures. The ELL component, and since we won't have an ELL component, it's going to take the percentage of points that are weighted for that category and redistribute it to the achievement and growth areas, which we'll see in a second. And then, these additional indicators, chronic absenteeism is one of the measures. And then, there's this other component where it's looking at percentage of juniors and seniors who take advanced coursework, AP, IB, dual enrollment, and other programs. And we will have to work with the state to determine exactly what courses we have that qualify for that. But based on the trends that we've seen in the past several years, that's one that I think we're already doing quite well on, as well as the chronic absenteeism and that significant drop that we've seen just in the last year. So, the weighting of these, what this looks like, if it's a...if the ELL component is there, then it's the column where it's 40 percent of the total score is based on the achievement, 20 percent on the growth, 20 percent on the completion, and then 10 for those last two categories. If we don't have the English language proficiency, that 10 percent is now split between achievement and growth, so it's now in a 48 percent to 22 percent split.
So, can I...
Yes.
So, that second...that second group, that student group, is that the measure that's going to be taking the bottom 25 percent or...
No. We'll see that. Every student has a student growth score, and this is taking the...I think they're switching it from the median to the mean. There was a slight change in that, but we're now looking at the mean SGP. So, all of our students will have a student growth score in ELA, and we'll have one in math, and then it's looking at those, the average of all of those. So, as I said earlier, there's the normative component. Schools will have a percentile rank, 1 to 99. It's really...the current system, the bottom 25...I'm sorry, the bottom 20 percent are the ones that are categorized as level four, level five schools, with a few other measures that may place them into one of those categories. And the new system's only looking at the bottom 10 percent. So, and we'll see that. But other than that, it's really just a number that's reported, whether, where you fall within that 1 to 99 range.
So, Jeff, moving to the accountability percentile, is that replacing the accountability score of 1 through 5?
No. We're getting there. Okay. And they keep saying, please don't compare this year to last year. Two totally different measures based on, and soon to be based on, different tests, but they stress that continuously, trying to, you can't compare to the previous system. So, the reason why there's this bottom 25 percent, it's all about closing the gaps of our learners. And the point was raised, there are two ways that you can do it. You can raise your bottom students, or you can always close the gap by decreasing the enrollment of your highest achieving student. So, obviously, that's not something that they want to encourage schools to do, so it's all about raising the floor and focusing on that cohort of students, which they've called the lowest performing 25 percent. Every school has a lowest performing 25 percent. One school's lowest performing 25 percent may be another school's top 25 percent, but every school has that portion of students, and every school needs to focus on closing those achievement gaps.
And Jeff, every year for the lowest 25 percent is...are we, as a district, looking at the...I use the word not...the makeup of those lower 25 percent? Like, are there other indicators within those lower 25 percent? We don't have to get into specific details right now, but say IEPs or something like that, where we can kind of get an idea of how we can assist those lower 25 percent?
That's something that we're going to have to...yes, we're going to address that. Now, when we went to this session, and I want to say it was mid to late March, the state promised us that we would have those...we would know who those students are before the end of March. We still don't have them as of today, and when I asked earlier this week, they said, you'll get them before the end of April. So, we still don't know. Our school is going to be measured based on how well those students do.
Right.
But we don't even know who they are.
Right. Because I'm thinking, to be proactive, if there's resources, or what do we need to do to get those bottom 25 percent to where they need to be? If there is anything that they need. But I can see the challenge with the timing of when we get that information.
So, this is really in a comparison to the grade 3 to 8 model, where there's a...there we can use this cohort model where we can track students through school systems, high schools, and particularly, they even said, regional high schools. It's...we can't really use this cohort model. But what they are trying to do is address the transient population component that many districts struggle with. We don't struggle with it as much as some other districts, but we have had our challenges of students who have enrolled with us in February, and then they're taking the test in March, and who knows where they came from and what education they received, but now they're counting as one of our students, even though they only...they may have only been sitting in a Somerset Berkeley seat for two weeks. So, what the state is doing to address that is the student needs to have been enrolled in that year's October 1 report, and the previous year's October 1 enrollment. So, they need to have been...it's only looking at the students who are with us for two years, and if...whether or not they took a test in the spring, because of our high school students, they tend not to, but they need to have been enrolled with us for two consecutive years.
So, they take the test?
They'll still take the test.
But they're not counted?
Right. For us.
They're not counted for individual student achievement, or they're for...
Student achievement, they'll still... Student achievement, they'll still take the test and have that achievement, but they're not going to count toward the school's accountability. So if we look, this is, the second and third columns from the left are for the non-high schools, so if you look at the last two columns to the right, it just shows which measures we're looking at for all students and for the lowest performing students. The graduation rates, we're just looking at all students, because our lowest performing 25%, that could change from one year to the next, and that, those students, they're taking the tests as ninth and 10th graders, depending on which test it is. So it's really looking at the achievement scores, the growth scores, and then that chronic absenteeism, and not the advanced coursework, just the chronic absenteeism. So we still, we also don't, don't know what our targets are. So we don't know who the students are, but even as, as a school in general, with chronic absenteeism, we've done such a great job in getting that number to where it is now, but we don't, we have no idea what the target is going to be for us. Is it, are they going to set targets that wants to continuously approve, improve upon those numbers? Or will there be a percentage that they deem to be, you know, proficient or, you know, acceptable in their eyes, as long as you meet that threshold, then you get the points? Those details still haven't come out yet. The points, just on a zero to four, whether you've, this is for the criterion piece, where we have those targets established, whether you've had, you've declined, no change, or ultimately exceeded the target, there's a zero to four range here. So this is where, this is how the, the accountability is ultimately determined. So we can see, this is a high school example. We have all students in the middle, lowest performing students make up the 50% on the right. And with all of these measures, which on that previous table had all of those checkmarks, we now have certain points that are distributed based on our school's progress. So we can see achievement total in this fictitious example here, achievement seven out of 12 for all students, five out of 12 for the lowest performing students, for growth at seven out of eight for all, eight out of eight for the lowest performing, and so on in each of those categories. Then you, what we'll do is determine the total points that we could have earned versus, or earned compared to what we could have earned for all students, do the same thing for your lowest performing, and then we can see here that we, this school would have earned 12.6 out of possible 20.3 points. So it's, it got 62% of its points. And that, that number is going to be placed into another formula to see exactly where the school's going to fall in the categorization. All right, so here is, here's that spread of schools. So we still have two lowest performing categories, rather than saying levels four and five, that focused targeted support and broad comprehensive support. And then not meeting, partially meeting, and meeting, and for some schools, again, they don't know what the title's going to be for this, but they're saying it's some schools of recognition. They'll probably come up with some other terminology for each of these categories. But that previous example, where I think the average was 62%, that school would be a partially meeting targets. Assuming it had graduation, I'm sorry, yes, graduation rate met a certain threshold, the participation rate in MCAS was at 95% or better, a school could have really great scores. It could easily fall within that 75 to 100% score, but if a, if a school has 94% of the students participating in MCAS and not the 95, it'll automatically be in the focused targeted support. If it misses one student, if it falls one student short of the threshold for graduation, no matter how well the students are achieving in that school, it will be in focused and So here is the, just a little bit of that information, schools with low participant, low assessment participation below 95%, and I forget exactly what the cutoff is for graduation, but it's, I think it's below, it's about two-thirds or so, maybe below 70%. Now here are two examples of high school one versus high school two, and when you look at these two schools, it looks like they're, they're pretty comparable. Maybe school number one is a little bit more high achieving than school number two, at least based on the accountability percentile. They're in the 42nd percentile versus the 12, that the percentage of targets going through those, distribution of points, they're about equal, 75 versus 76, both had participation rates that were above 95%, no low performance subgroups. One had a slightly lower graduation rate than the other, and because that falls below a certain threshold, high school number one is the lower of the two. It's focused targeted support versus the one meeting targets, high school number two. And that's solely because of the graduation rate. So we do need a, there are a number of subgroups that we will be looking at, because when we go back into this, if there is a single low performing subgroup that, that is found in the school, it, the school automatically becomes focused and targeted. And those subgroups are not only the lowest performing 25, but then high needs English language learners, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and then also the major racial and ethnic subgroups. The subgroups that we tend to have here, Somerset Berkeley, are students with disabilities In addition to all of that, and I, I really skipped the, the component about district because we're one school, one district, so they really are the same measure for us. In a, in the Somerset Public Schools, where there are four schools, if one, three schools could be level one, and if one school's a level two, the district is a level two. So it's, the, the current system, every district's measure is a measure of its lowest performing school. In the new system, districts will be measured based on the aggregate score. So we're going to go through this entire calculation as, for a district as a whole, but for Somerset Berkeley, it's essentially the same thing. But in addition to that, there will be some other measures that don't affect the score, but will be reported. And that's what you see in the bottom half of this slide. These are all things that they were, we were expecting them to be part of the system. They kept telling us to be expecting these. But discipline rates are there, the availability of art education is going to be there, educator data, and what they're saying for that, I'm not exactly sure how extensive it'll be, but the one example that they shared was teacher attendance is going to be one of the factors reported. Again, not, not used as an indicator for the accountability itself, but it will be reported. One that I'm surprised they did not add, because they were, they seemed to be very adamant that this was going to be part of it, was grade nine course passing. There's such, such a high correlation between students who fail freshman classes and their graduation rates. There's such a link between those, but in the end, they decided to, they will report it, but not count it toward the accountability. And then per pupil expenditures is just another measure that's going to be reported. So this is, and that's just an overview. Well, certainly, once we go through the spring testing and we get these scores in the fall, we'll, as I've done in the past, we'll dive into this a little bit deeper and actually see how, how well the school did. But one of the interesting things with this is because of this 50-50 mix and all students, you figure that the lowest performing 25% makes up a quarter of the all-student score. So the lowest performing 25% really accounts for 62.5% of the score, when, when you think of that, because they're also part of the all-students calculation, a quarter of that all, in a way. So, but that's, that's a significant shift, and that's something that we'll have to look at once we identify that and, and what other structures we can put in place. Ms. Haskell has explained about some of those supports that she's done through Title I, but we'll have to see what other things that we can do to really address that.
So in one respect, it focuses some attention on those kids that might be struggling a little bit more.
Yes.
Does it also provide more, for lack of a better term, credit to school districts who are making some headway with that population versus the school in general? Do you know what I mean? If you, if you're focusing on that population and you're making some, some progress there, doesn't it give, give a little bit more recognition doing it this way, by separating out their scores?
It, it does.
Because otherwise, when it was general, you've got that group at the top, which are already achieving at high levels, so it makes it incrementally more difficult to improve their achievement, where this, this way, because you're putting more of a, significantly more focus on that group. Not only are you able to put more resources on it, because you're going to measure it more, but your score is based more on their achievement.
Right. Their achievement and their growth.
Right.
So, so does it, in a sense, ignore the 50% in the middle? Or is it assumed that if you're improving the learning of the bottom 25%, everybody benefits from a rising tide? I mean, just, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm, I'm thinking they're looking, you're looking at the top 25% and the bottom 25%, and the average kid in the middle 50% doesn't seem to factor into this formula, unless there's an informed, you know, perspective that if you improve the bottom 25%, the kids in the middle are going to benefit as well. I don't, I just don't know.
I, I had the same thought, Mr. Pierce. We are, there is credit that's being given to that advanced coursework at the top.
Right.
But you're absolutely right. So we, we need to maintain our focus there, put a lot of focus on the bottom 25%. And our middle 50 will, maybe even middle, yeah, about middle 50, will have to make sure that they are, continue to get all of the great services and supports that they, they're getting now.
And we certainly will not neglect anybody.
No, I wasn't suggesting.
No.
But I feel like I need to, I really want to say that out loud, because in spite
of, you know, a formula for MCAS, that is not our sole measure of growth and inspired learning that happens.
Really? I think I've heard that before.
I, I may have mentioned it in the past. So, and I think that, you know, even when you talk about, you know, the rising tide, there are some opportunities for us to build in a variety of supports for all kids that, that in fact, everybody will benefit from. Not just in terms of remediation, but also in terms of extension. And, and we, we see regularly at our meetings what great things kids can do, so.
And certainly, I wasn't suggesting by my question that we should ignore the middle 50%.
No.
I was expressing concern about, they seem to be forgotten, or, you know.
And I just want to say, no.
To some extent in this whole formula, so we obviously cannot, we cannot forget them.
No.
That's the important point. Anyone else have any other questions? There was one thing I wanted to mention, because this had occurred to me as a result of your report at the last meeting, Mr. Schoonover, about absentee, the improvement in absenteeism. I'd like, and maybe we can put this on a future agenda, but I was, my thought was that we ought to go back to the group of high school teachers and administrators that raised, or started to work on the absentee policy themselves because of the concerns they had, just to see if they have any thoughts about the data, how the, how the new policy is working. We are already tweaked it once, but if there are things that, that they see as a result of implementing this new policy for a year, that we might think about adjusting to improve attendance even further. And then the second, well, the second thing I wanted to raise was something apart from this presentation, so does anyone have any other questions about this before we move on? I was wondering if you could just briefly, we have security on as a executive session matter, but I know a group of administrators and perhaps, I think primarily administrators attended a conference related to safety in schools.
I was going to mention that, yes.
You were.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Yep.
Obviously not anything that deals with security that would be confidential, but I think, I think it's good for the Kuhn community to be aware that we're participating in programs like that.
Absolutely. All right, so before I get to that and one other item, I did also want to share with you, this is really just for information only, but you have a copy of this prom contract that's there, and I did want to just point out a change that the high school administration is making for this year. Now, I'm not sure if some of our, our parents on the school committee have had children attend the prom in recent years and had to sign this, but we do have, for a number of years, students before attending the prom, and parents, sign this, and it really recognizes the breathalyzer component, because that's been a feature at our proms for a number of years now, where if, if the administration suspects that someone is under the influence of alcohol, we do have breathalyzers there, the administration administers it, and if it turns out positive, then there's always a police officer there as well, and they can do some additional tests. But alcohol is only, a breathalyzer only identifies someone who's under the influence of alcohol. We have no way of identifying whether students are under the influence of drugs. The Somerset Police Department has a recognized drug specialist on force now, and we are having that officer there as a detail that night. And if anyone suspects that a student is under the influence of drugs, then we also have, in addition to the breathalyzer, we have a drug recognition specialist. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that efforts are being made. We want to make sure that our kids are, are attending the prom, they don't clean, they don't need to be under the influence of anything to have a good time. But certainly, it is a concern, it's always, it's one of the nights that I, I don't look forward to every single year. I don't want my phone to ring at all, and it's, it's just something that the school is making sure that we have these other, really, these safety nets for the kids, to make sure that if someone is under the influence, that we're making sure that they are getting the, the care that they need. We've had, had situations just in recent years where this would have been nice. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, just in case you hear about it in the coming month or two.
And Jeff, so students aren't allowed to purchase tickets or, or attend the prom unless they sign the contract?
They need to sign the contract.
And the parents, and the parents do as well?
So as Mr. Pierce just indicated, last week, we had a team of administrators from both Somerset and Somerset Berkeley attending Mass, Massachusetts Juvenile Police Officers' Association Annual Conference. It was held in Norwood. Officer Gimmont went, Ms. Haskell and I were there, Dr. Bresford, and then we did have some administrators from Somerset Public as well. But it was a two-day conference, not everyone went for, for both days, but a, a number of fantastic keynotes, and keynotes where there were also guest speakers who could also come to, come to schools and give their similar presentations to students. They were all very, very, very good. And then there were a number of breakout sessions that ranged from Alistrils to changes in marijuana law to, I'm trying to think of what the, Alec, Autism and Law Enforcement Education Coalition, I think is what the, the title was. So there were... So there were breakout sessions that covered a wide variety of topics. Many of them were focused toward the SROs, or certainly more SROs who were there than there were administrators. But there were a lot of, there was lots of good information for administrators to take home as well. So we did, it was really a fantastic conference. And actually, Ms. Haskell was approached after that to be part of the committee next year to develop, to help develop the professional development from more of the administration side because it is geared more heavily on the SROs. I don't know if you want to say anything about that?
So we had talked a little bit about that. And there's always something to learn, even though it's a little bit more geared to the SROs, but they have been trying really hard to get more school administrators to be, to be part of the conference and to come and learn. I mean, there was, there was a lot to learn even as a parent. And one of the things that, one of my favorite parts, which I had not seen before, is they had some options for professional development and for maybe some parent programming. So they had the Wahlberg Foundation, which I had never heard of before. And the movie that they showed was very impactful. It was, it was excellent. So that was a twist. I had been before, about three years ago, I had gone a couple of years in a row, so I haven't been for two years. And so it was, it was really outstanding programming. But if we could find some ways to kind of marry both the SRO perspective and the school administrator perspective, I think it will be even better. So I will, I will be on that planning team.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Great.
And then lastly, we also had a really great event here this past weekend. It was a, it started, originated from the Somerset Public Schools, but also included Somerset Berkeley. It was the Autism Awareness Walk. We had over 400 participants who are here. And they ended up raising, they presented our school committee meeting on Tuesday night and raised just under $10,000, I think it was $9,947. And that's going to be made available to teachers. Teachers can apply for mini grants. They're going to be forming a committee of teachers, of parents, administrators. And teachers can apply for grants if there's a piece of equipment that they need in their classroom that would benefit, the idea is to benefit students with disabilities, whether it's something to, a calming feature to a classroom or if it's an app that they, that they need for some type of assistive technology or something that's, that's not really built into the budget or they don't want to wait six months to have it approved for the next year's budget, then they can apply for these mini grants. So that will be available to teachers in both Somerset and Somerset Berkeley as we have strong participation from both districts.
And so Jeff, they'll be forming that committee that will review applications for, for the funds?
Okay, and I think that's all I have for tonight.
I'd just like to, you didn't mention the sort of the risk assessment that occurred a week or two ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And we do have security on our executive session agenda. And I'll mention a few things during executive session. But one thing that I wanted to say publicly about that is how impressed I was with our school resource officer. I think he, I think he's doing an incredible job. It was evident to me during, during that assessment that he is extremely proactive, that he is working with the administration and with teachers in a way that I hadn't appreciated before. And I think he's, he's doing, my impression based upon that, that assessment was extremely positive. I think he's doing a fantastic job and I think we're very lucky to have him. So just wanted to mention that. So that kind of leads us into the next item, which is Committee Designee to School Safety Advisory Board. The superintendent is in the process of forming a school safety advisory board, which is going to be, I don't know, if you want to speak a little bit about it first, but it's going to be a joint committee between the two school districts?
It will. So this is something that Chief McNeil originally recommended. And he and I have talked about this and what the membership would be. But it's, it's going to consist of an administrator, a teacher, and a parent from each district, from each school in both districts, as well as representatives from central office, the police department, a member from each committee. And Chief McNeil informed me this morning, also a member from the Board of Selectment will be on that as well. So the first meeting, actually, we were planning on it to be on April 25th, but because there's now going to be a member from the Board of Selectment on it, we need to move it from that night since they have a meeting. So first meeting will take place on the 23rd, Monday, the 23rd, the day we return for April vacation.
So there'll be, there'll be administrators and representatives from the four schools in the Somerset District. And then representative, parent, a member of the faculty, the principal, and a member of our school committee. And so we need, we need a designee. I am willing to serve on the board, but I didn't want to preempt that in the event that someone else was really strongly interested. Although I know that some of our committee members have some pretty significant business commitments these days. So happy to entertain any discussion about it.
Are those meetings in the evening, do you expect?
They will be.
And I think, I think that the committee at large would be informed of developments that would come up and that, the plans that would come out of those, that board meeting.
Oh, sure.
So I think I would be fine with you representing. Although it sounds really interesting, there is a lot that we're doing. So if you're willing to put the time into it.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, then I will fill that role. Next, we have our norms and beliefs, which I just thought would be good to review and reaffirm. These were adopted by the committee a few years ago. I'm not sure if everybody has had an opportunity to review them. I did, I didn't see anything that particularly needed to be changed. Is, does anyone have any thoughts or comments about this?
No, I just think that it would be, it would be great as a group if we had norms and beliefs on how we govern, how we communicate with one another, how we interact with administration, given the role that we serve and our obligation to the community to be able to communicate in good faith with respect to each other and also to administration and understand what those are. I think it would be in good faith for us to sign these as a group. And I would love to hear from the administration if there were anything else you'd like to add. As far as communication, you know, we'd be open to that as well. But I think it's just a nice pledge to one another on how, on how we conduct ourselves in units.
Should we modify the existing document to include what you just suggested? Instead of having separate norms and beliefs for different?
Well, I think, I think this does.
It does cover.
I think Mrs. Field was simply sort of reemphasizing, but I think those issues are all covered.
Yeah. The only thing I would bring up, and we don't have to decide it now, but we should probably talk as a group on how, if we're going to include it in the norms and beliefs, given that we're now governing in a world of social media. You know, without restraining ourselves because we want to be able to communicate with our constituents, do we have a dialogue with how we communicate on social media platforms? Because, you know, that's how a lot of people get their news now. And we take the meetings and we have newspapers where that information is. But we may want to have a deeper discussion at some point. And that may also go for texting as well. I know the Policy Subcommittee is going to be looking at some of the social media texting recommendations that have come down from the MASC and will be bringing that with everybody unless the Policy Subcommittee has had a chance to look at that. But I just put that out there because we are governing in a new time. And I think we just want to be mindful and at least have the conversation.
I wonder if there might be, I mean, we really adopted this after looking at other school districts. So I wonder if some other school districts have already looked at that as well and looked at some examples.
Stephanie, how about if we could add a retreat? An excellent thing.
Take it for now.
Put on the agenda for a retreat.
Yeah, we could adopt now and then add it to our agenda item for the retreat to have a little bit of a conversation.
Yeah, the, the policy doesn't make specific reference to social media, but it, but it does indicate, it does say that individual committee members may be contacted by constituents with complaints or criticism of district matters, such matters may include complaints of specific personnel which are not within the purview of the school committee, or should be addressed initially by administrators or superintendent. All such complaints should be promptly forwarded to the chair and the superintendent, who will discuss the appropriate response. Committee members may respond by informing the constituent that the communication will be forwarded to the superintendent and chair for response. So, all right. So I would entertain a motion just to reaffirm these norms and beliefs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Giliducci. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
I was just going to say, will, will we obviously have the opportunity to have our additional members from the K?
Yes, absolutely. 2018, 2019 school calendar. I didn't see that.
You, you do not have it. I was hoping to have it for tonight, but, and I will just quickly explain why you don't. The, the problem is, the first day, traditionally, our first day of school is the day after Labor Day. The day after Labor Day this year is the state primary election. And unlike the election that we held here last week in this building, was it this week? It was this week, wasn't it? The state primary, when we have a state primary, the polling can be opened from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. We were attempting to have, to get the first day work done, get, get out of the way, student pictures, class meetings, things like that. Really a non-academic day, but just to try to manage all of that with an early release so that our students wouldn't have lunch and dismiss them at approximately 11:30. But the more, the more I've thought about it and thinking, this is the first day of school with just the first day chaos of parents dropping off students, buses coming around the building, student drivers needing to park on campus. And although we have, that's the day that we have the fewest number of student drivers on campus, but we still, they still would take a significant proportion of, of the student parking lot, where we would want our residents to be able to park to go into the Democratic Senate to vote. And I'm just picturing the craziness, particularly at 7:00 a.m., then again at 11:30. And I'm debating and thinking that a first day of school for the high school only, K can start on the Tuesday, would be the Wednesday after Labor Day. That's why you don't have it right now.
So will we?
Right, I spoke.
And conceivably, there could be other factors involved. So maybe, is there any deadline by which we have to have the school calendar for next year?
There isn't. It's been, historically, I've looked back, we've approved it in May a number of times. So at the next meeting would be fine. I know that families do, they're planning vacations and they want to know exactly when, when things are. But we're still have February vacation at the regular time, April vacation at the regular time. You can still look at the calendar and know it's just what the last day of school is scheduled to be. But we're also in New England, we know that that rarely ever holds true.
So the next item that we have is the annual appointment of the superintendent to the Regional Education Assessment and Diagnostic Service Services, Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors. Looking at the materials, the ones I received in the mail, I didn't mean that the packet had the proposed motion. I don't see it here, but. So the motion that Reed has forwarded to us is pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012. Members of the Board of Directors at Reed's Collaborative are appointed annually. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Charlie Schoonover to serve as the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District's representative on the Board of Directors of the Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012 for the 2018, 2019 school year.
So moved.
Second. Well, we have, we have two motions here. A motion made by Mr. Giliducci, seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi and Mr. Larabu. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
Good luck.
Then, as you know, at the last meeting, we discussed an open meeting law complaint that had been filed shortly thereafter. I responded to it and we received correspondence from the complainant, Mr. Higgins, that my response was satisfactory to him and he was not pursuing the complaint. And then we received an acknowledgement from the Attorney General's Office that the matter was closed. And I just wanted the committee to be aware of that and the public to be aware of it. You're just here to keep an eye on us, Mr. Machado, or did you?
No, I just, I had it on my calendar. I had nothing to do with it, so I figured it was still coming.
Okay. The next thing I wanted to just mention to people is, Mr. Higgins also sent out an email within the last few days bringing to our attention a recent decision from the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, which we need to be aware of. It was decided April 5th, 2018. So it was after we concluded our superintendent's evaluation for this year. And it's, it's an interesting decision and it's, it's one that we need to be aware of because the Supreme Judicial Court said essentially that it is not permissible under the open meeting law for us to circulate individual evaluations among our committee members in advance of the public meeting at which we discuss the superintendent's evaluation. It acknowledges in the decision that, that that conclusion is contrary to the Attorney General's interpretation of the open meeting law and the regulations that the Attorney General had actually issued. And it also acknowledges, and you have to love this, that, underline the language, but acknowledging that this may actually, the sentence is, however inefficient this may prove... may prove for local bodies in certain circumstances, this is the balance that the legislature has struck. So they, the court acknowledges that, you know, it's certainly much more efficient and perhaps productive for these individual evaluations to be summarized in advance and summary and the individual evaluations circulated among the committee members so they can be read and, and discussed in an informed way. So we'll have to figure out a process for next year. It could be that we present the individual evaluations at one meeting and then they're public and then we conduct the evaluation at the subsequent meeting. The court actually suggests that they could be made public when they're submitted and then discussed by the committee at a subsequent meeting. In other words, we would announce that the evaluation, the individual evaluations had all been filed with our recording secretary and that they were made public, either posting them on the website or simply making an announcement that they were, they were available. But it's going to require, it's going to require that we change our process. And it's, it's quite possible that there'll be some direction at the school committee conference in November as to how to deal with this decision, but it is, it is somewhat counterintuitive to me. It is what it is.
But they gotta do something.
I was wondering, I, we should have had our, our students who were at the Supreme Judicial Court.
Yeah.
Raise some issues. All right, well, at this point, we're for Somerset and Berkeley K-8 updates. So let's, we'll hear Berkeley update.
Okay. On the K-8-4 side, we haven't had it for a while, but in February, the principal and assistant principal met with Officer Dan Moser from the Berkeley Police Department to review safety and security protocols. The review was linked to one of the Berkeley Community School improvement goals. They had a good meeting and believe the procedures and protocol are strong. And they've been devoting weekly staff meetings to reviewing school safety procedures and protocols with the faculty. And then the principal and the assistant principal and our special ed director met and reviewed the, with the MCAS test administrators. They had a mid-cycle data meeting with all the faculty and the principal set, met with the paraprofessionals to review all school safety protocols. Thirty new laptop computers were received and installed on our computer cart and were quickly in use by our third and fourth graders. These computers were purchased with funds raised by the Berkeley Community PTO. They're extremely grateful for this new technology, which will also allow us to deploy the older laptops to third and fourth grade classrooms without a grating need for every day classroom use. And a district-wide professional day was held on March twelfth. It began the day with staff service awards. The number of folks there for fifteen years, we had four. For twenty years, we had six. And for twenty-five years, we had two, one of them being assistant principal, Francesca, not assistant of the principal. And since March was Reed Across America Month, they had venue visitors who went and read to the students, namely, my wife and I do it every year with the kindergarteners, Mr. Lynch, Mrs. Hebert, Mrs. Kugler, Mrs. Donley, head grade audiences throughout the K-8-4 school. In the early childhood realm of preschool information that was held on March the eighth, preschool screening will occur in late April. Kindergarten registration will take place from March twenty-sixth to March thirty. That's already been done. And on March twenty-second, the assistant principal and principal and other members of the administrative team participated in another safety forum at the Berkeley Middle School. This forum was sponsored by the Berkeley Police Department and featured a presentation by Ellen Garcia, a nationally recognized expert in the field of school safety. And on April the fifth, the BCS Berkeley Community School celebrated opening, opening day of the Boston Red Sox. They wore their Sox uniforms to school, so they had a great time.
Do you have anything to add as far as?
Absolutely. According to the principal at our middle school at present, there's a hundred and eleven students in our grade eight. And at present, seventy-one students look like they're pointed towards Somerset, Berkeley next year, which is a slight increase in percentage over the historical sixty-two and a half percent of our graduating class that attends Somerset, Berkeley. This year's theater production of Pinocchio Junior, which my daughter is in, is at Berkeley Middle School the weekend of April twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth. So if you want to see a great performance, come to Berkeley. And importantly, the override two point O is officially on the Berkeley ballot for May the twelfth. It's an eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar override, which would allow for a three percent annual assessment growth of Berkeley's assessment. And at eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it would have an eight-year life, assuming a maximum three percent draw every year. So it's on the ballot on, on May the twelfth, as I mentioned. So unlike last year where we had seven forum parties before the, before the election and they got to hear me talk for two and a half hours each time, there's only two this time. One is on May the first at six thirty PM at Berkeley Middle School. And the second is on May the ninth, also at six thirty PM at Berkeley Middle School. These forums are both being held a little bit later than they were last year, due in part to the fact that we're waiting for the town of Berkeley to finish the budget process and it won't be completed until the end of April. So last year, there was a lot of, a lot of folks that attended earlier forums and there really wasn't enough information as to what the town intended to do in the case of a override passage or failure. So this year, we're trying to delay it a little bit so that the town has a little bit more time to complete its work.
Congratulations.
What time were those forums?
Six thirty PM at Berkeley Middle School.
Thank you.
And this is my last time doing this update. I, my last meeting as a member of the Berkeley K-8 School Committee was this past Monday. So when the election happens on May the twelfth, there'll be a new member in my spot, the K-8 School Committee.
But you remain on this committee?
Yeah, elected. You can't get rid of me that easily.
No, it's good.
So you said the date of the Berkeley election is?
May twelfth.
May twelfth, like that's what you just said.
Let me just make sure, just in case I'm looking at a different calendar.
Yeah, Saturday, May twelfth.
All right. And the reason I mention that is because some may be wondering why our committee did not have a reorganization this evening in view of the fact that the Somerset election occurred on Monday. The, our regional agreement in Section one C specifically says that at the first regular meeting of the ISC, which is the committee following the acceptance of this agreement by the member towns, and thereafter, at the first regular meeting of the regional school committee, following the later of the annual town elections of the member towns, in each year, the committee shall organize and choose by ballot a chairperson and vice chairperson from its own membership. Therefore, according to our regional agreement, we will reorganize at our first meeting following Berkeley election. I know that we have two new members from the K-8 School Committee, Mrs. Rothwell and Mr. Patel. Mr. Machado's here. I don't know if there's anything else to report from the K-8 School Committee.
Sure. Last night, I mean, Tuesday night, we had our reorg for the K-8. We appointed Melissa Terra as our chair, our vice chair is Andy Crook, and both Michael and Laurie both volunteered to be on region. We quickly nominated them. So one of the biggest things that probably happened in our meeting was during our budget transfer, we too were in the black by two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. But we did, we transferred those funds to our security line and starting next, probably Saturday or next week, we'll be doing some up two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars worth of security repairs from next week until the end of the summer to also secure our schools since we had those funds. I also notified the Selectmen's Festive Day when I was at their meeting. We're getting closer with the SRO. The chief would like to see one with our subcommittee. We still have certain members that would like to have one at each school, but at this point, I think we really need to listen to the chief and, and then let the safety committee get together and actually come up with an agreement. Right from the beginning, that, that purpose was just to have something on the town ballot. There, something that was mentioned this day at the Selectmen's meeting is that they would prefer us to adjust our budget and remove that article, but Mr. Brown and the chief, they're going to get together to figure out what the actual cost is and they're going to work with the administration. So our next meeting, we're having another meeting on the twenty-third also to finalize that budget piece so to bring it to town meeting so the Selectmen can put it on the warrant. Did I miss anything? We also had a same report and.
We had a fantastic presentation by our North Elementary students. If you want to talk about that.
Yeah, the North Elementary came in with their presentation, our, and I think our next meeting, we're going to Chase. But the North presentation, they came in, they mentioned about the walk that we had this weekend and also all the fundraisers that they've done throughout the year for either the cancer, whatever it could be. But I think the highlight of the night was, in my opinion, the highlight of the whole night was a six, a six-year-old girl who read a letter, which I named her the best, the best big sister of the year, in my opinion, because her brother, Jack, has autism. And, and she was, she read a letter about Jack is to her and how funny it is and tried to explain it to all her kids in school. It was a great letter. If you have the opportunity to watch it on TV, I definitely urge you to see it because it's outstanding.
Thank you. All right, I've been reminded that I inadvertently skipped over an item under Other Matters and Information, which, item number one, summer school for students on individual education programs. And this is a matter that Mrs. Terra asked us to place on the agenda. So, Mr. Schoonover, you fill us in on this issue.
Sure. With Mrs. Terra's request, which was, she believes that a student with an IEP, if that student does not pass, does not successfully pass a class during the regular school year and then needs to go to summer school for that credit recovery aspect, retake the class and with hopes to pass it and change the fourth quarter grade, she feels that a student with an IEP should not have to pay to attend summer school. Mrs. Martician did survey a number of schools. I'd say half the schools do not charge students for summer school and about half of those, you know, students with an IEP, if they fail the class, and this is not extended school year, this is not the ESY program that would be part of a student's IEP. This is for students who, for whatever their disability is, whatever modifications they have in their IEPs, they, they still, they fail their U.S. History class or their Algebra II class. Half, about half the schools charge those students and about half don't. The ones who don't, Mr. Aguirre and I, I don't think, Mr. Aguirre is in here right now?
Is he?
Yeah, he's here. Oh, he is here, so we can talk about his program. But in looking at some of the, the schools that do not charge, Mr. Aguirre knows that they are not self-supporting summer programs that they have. They are programs that are funded by the school department. So there's, there's a different program than the one that we have in, in existence here. So.
One of the things, before we jump into Mr. Aguirre, I, it, coming off of your presentation about accountability and helping those twenty-five percent in the bottom, maybe getting a little bit of clarity on IEPs and what we can do to support. As I would be interested as a school committee to see what that cost would look like if we were to take that on, to eliminate any barriers from these kids that are on IEPs that we need to help and support. And it's caused one of those barriers. I know you said in Somerset, the two things that we face here are disabilities and economically disadvantaged. So right away, I'm thinking, how can we support these kids? And if it means supporting them through summer school, again, I don't know what the dollar amount is on this, so we might have to do a deeper dive. But I just think, given the presentation on accountability and what we might need to do for the bottom twenty-five percent, is providing them with some type of summer school support and taking away the barrier of cost going to help them rise up. So.
Can I, but I, I have a couple, let me just, let me put these questions on the table so they can be addressed at the same time. The summer program, does that address only high school students who may have failed a course? Or does it also address kindergarten to eighth grade?
Middle school and, and high school.
Middle school and high school. And the program is presently self-sufficient?
Yes.
So it could be a cost to both districts if we had to support the students on IEPs that are enrolled in this summer program. Because I don't see any reason why, I mean, I'm not, I'm not jumping to conclusions, I'm not saying we're going to do this, but if students were going to attend for free and someone had to bear the cost, I would assume that the K-8 district would bear the cost for middle school students who were taking these summer courses. So they'd have to look, I mean, we can't speak for them. We can only speak for the high school students in the first place. There was another issue also that Mrs. Terra raised, which was, it's sort of incorporated into this issue, which was, she was raising the issue that parents whose, whose students on an IEP were failing should know before the final report card comes out at the end of June, that their student, that their child on an IEP will need to attend the summer program. And I don't know if that was given any consideration, if there's any way to address, address that concern or whether, whether there's a feeling within the administration that that's a concern that warrants some consideration or not.
If I could just add to that, I don't think that that, just from what I've heard from family health, I think that that applies to all students. I think that there's a, an issue with the timing of notification, whether or not they're on IEPs, when a, there's not a sufficient amount of time for families to be notified that they have to enroll their, their child in summer school in the timeframe to get them started. There's, there's not enough time. That's happened to a number of.
I would agree with that whole lot of you, and, and that continues to a declining enrollment in summer school.
Well, and, and then it puts these students in a difficult situation because if they miss that opportunity, they may have to completely make up that cost, which impacts their scheduling capability in the following year, you know?
And it also makes it very difficult for, for me, an administrator, to plan summer schools, how many classes I need, how many teachers I need. Because invariably, the first two or three days of summer school, I have an influx of kids coming in who just found out, and I've already got classes established. Now all of a sudden, I got a class that's too big, I need to split, I need to get another teacher.
I don't know how to address it, but I think that that's something that really does need to be looked at.
What's your first day of summer school this year, now that we know that our last day is June twenty-fifth?
July ninth.
So there, that's a little bit more time than you've had.
Well, I keep moving back to try to accommodate that problem. I can't go back any farther than July ninth, but that's been an ongoing problem for a couple of years. I've tried to address it. I haven't been successful in, in getting the timeframe reduced between the time. I haven't been successful in getting the timeframe reduced between the time teachers actually turn in their final grades and the time people are notified about summer school. I've even offered you, once you get final grades, you give me the list, I'll notify them.
But I would think, especially now that third term closes, I think today, there must be some indicators, three terms...
In reference to what you said about notifying IEP students after term three, you should notify everyone.
Everybody.
Every student who's in danger of failing. Now, everybody knows that now.
Right, right.
Basically on three terms, that you may fail. I'm not saying you will fail, but you may fail, and if you do, summer school starts July 9th.
It would actually be better for them to already be enrolled at that spot.
I have these summer school brochures printed every year, a considerable extent. They used to go out from guidance with the notification. For whatever reason, I don't know, they don't give mail to students. I asked last year, why aren't these getting mailed to students? That's why I print them, I give them all to you. My answer was, their answer to me was, they didn't have the postage. I didn't think that was a viable answer. I said, I'll pay for the postage through the summer school fees. These kids need to be notified that summer school is an option.
And it can also be posted in Aspen where you can just totally eliminate the issue of postage. I mean, I believe that there's ways that we upload the PDF of their grades.
And those are all issues that impact me, but I don't have anything to do with resolving those issues. In Mrs. Tara's request, and I got my information from when I read the paper, when she made this request, the notification, yeah, that's certainly an issue, I would agree with that. Everything else, which I'll address now if you want, I don't agree with.
Okay, before you do that, so, Mr. Spunover, can you, I mean, I understand that it's somewhat speculative to be sending out, but maybe a notice at the end of the third, what is it, quarter? Third quarter, to parents that their child is in danger of failing a course. And here are the options, and one of them is summer school. And there's a summer school program, and it begins on July 9th. And they should at least consider planning unless they're confident that their student is going to be able to turn things around. And get some input from the high school administration about how to address that concern because it seems to be one that is broader than simply students on IEPs. So at this point...
And I think it's a positive thing, too. I mean, I think it helps, especially given the new accountability standards and what we're trying to do and what we can do to support. I think parents might appreciate the communication.
Are you hitting that nail on the head because you're talking about that 25%?
Right.
That's right. And the more information Mr. Aguirre has in the bottom quartile. So...
If I could, and I won't take much of your time, but I want to just give you this, just to maybe address some of the concerns you just raised about the problem.
Thank you.
I've been running summer school for 20 years now. We notify parents, as you can see in the brochure, that we understand there are some families that may have difficulty paying the summer school fee. Never in my 20 years have we ever denied anyone the privilege or the opportunity, they don't consider, because of the opportunity to attend summer school, because of finances. It's always done confidentially on an individual basis. If a family calls me and says, my son needs to go to summer school, but I can't afford it, okay? We need to get your son or daughter in summer school. What can you afford? They need to take two classes, I may say, well, can you pay for one? Yes, I can pay for one, but I don't have it now. Fine, can you pay me between now and the end of summer school for one class? The other one will be a scholarship. So the finances are not an issue for anybody. And this is where I have a very serious problem in distinguishing a group of students because of their academic status and attaching a family's ability to pay to that student's academic situation. I think it's discriminatory. You're saying to a whole group of students, you can come free simply because you have an IEP. You don't have to pay this fee. You don't do that NAIR program. You don't do that for athletics, you don't do that for music, you don't do it for anything. They're not excluded by any means, some summer school. Our summer school is totally self-sufficient. We run a program, you can see in the booklet, there's 25, 28 different classes, all classes for middle school and high school kids. We have several, you know, maybe 175 kids, depends on each year, it may be different. I know, and again, from what I read in the paper, that Mrs. Tara compared other systems to this one. It wasn't a fair comparison because I know the other systems she did. We are the only summer school in the entire area that operates on a self-sufficient basis and runs all middle school and all high school classes for all schools. Some of the programs she mentioned, some of those could be steadily some of their kids because none of them have a full program for middle school and high school. They're restricted in some cases to either grade or subject, and none of them are entirely self-sufficient. None of them have been in existence for 20 years. All of those students, all of those talents at one time or another have sent some of their students to me for whatever reason. Not necessarily every year, but I know, for example, Dighton-Holworth was one of the issues she meant. I have kids from Dighton Middle School, my son's from last year. I have kids from Dighton-Holworth coming to my evening school program all the time. Well, that's a different program, but in the past I've had it. I've had kids from Westboro come to me. Westboro has been an on again, off again. Every time they change a student, they either have summer school or they don't have summer school. It depends, it's not been consistent. C-CO, I had a long conversation a couple of years ago with a member of the C-CO School Committee about my program because their kids were going to East Providence because it was more convenient. Their summer school is not a full program, it's only for certain grades, certain subjects. We are not an extended school year program like you have for half for kids with special ed or IEPs. You can't charge them that program because you are requiring them to go. Summer school is recommended, it's not required. We can't require kids to come to summer school and then charge them. We recommend they come to summer school, which means it's a voluntary thing. There's options. You don't want to come to summer school, you're going to repeat grade nine math or whatever the case may be. Many kids, many students get notices from the guidance and don't come at all. They have to adjust their schedule. Some don't come because of late notification. I'll be the first to think that's true. My personal perspective is, I find a ethical problem mixing academics and families' ability to pay. To say, as a group, you don't have to pay this fee because of your academic status. Well, if you want to let them come free, then let everybody come free. And then you absorb the cost. But that's foolish. We've been successful in 20-plus years doing it this way, why change it now? We're not denying any of these students the opportunity to come to summer school. They come whether they can pay or not, but that's for everybody. We don't distinguish groups of kids and their ability to pay. That's a private individual matter with the family, and I think that's why you shouldn't. That's how you do your athletic fees. A family can't pay, then the principal makes a decision as to what they're going to do. This is no different. So we're not denying anyone, we're giving them the opportunity. It's self-sufficient. It's a very successful program. We're the only ones in the area, there's a reason we're the only ones in the area. It's hard to run this program. And it's hard to run it self-sufficient. You need the numbers. We charge $130 a week for Somerset and Berkeley students. I haven't raised a fee in, I don't know, three, four, five years. Because of that reason, we don't want it to become burdensome. But our expenses increase every year. I don't find any rationale that I can come up with to approve fair requests, to be pretty honest with you. Unless you want to make a whole thing free.
Do we have a sense, and I'm not specifics, but aggregate data? How many, what percentage of our summer school students have IEPs? I know we might not have that...
I've never, I've never talked into that because again, it's... But I'm going to say, I don't know, if I got, let's just make up numbers. If I've got 200 kids, I've got maybe 20 IEPs. But what do I do, what do I do, if you implement this fee, this program, what do I do to the kid who comes from Somerset from Swansea who's got an IEP?
Well, that's outside of our district.
Well, but now you're making a discrimination between...
No, 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 because my concern as a school committee member is to make sure that we're focusing on the accountability scores of the school. And if we can remove the barriers of cost for those students...
But we already did remove, they're not paying us, they can't pay. There is no barrier to cost. It's already been removed, it's always been removed, it hasn't been there. And it has nothing to do with their IEP. The cost is based upon a family's ability to pay. If this parent calls me and says, we're having difficulties at home, whatever, we can't pay this fee, my answer to them is, we want your child in summer school. We will work out a system that's best for you. You tell me what you can or cannot do. And if I have some parent that says, you know, I raised my grandkids and nobody's helping me out and nobody's giving me any money, which happens, I just say, send them to summer school. Fine, I write them up as a scholarship. So there is no barrier in any of our programs. There is no barrier because of a family's lack of ability to pay. So I want that to be very clear. That's why I'm saying it's wrong to make a distinction based on a group of kids that has nothing to do with their ability to pay, simply upon their academic status. Now, you can get a student who has an IEP, let's just make up a scenario. He's got an IEP because there's a visual problem, he has to sit in front of the math class so we can see the board. But he flunked social studies. So he comes to summer school because he has an IEP, has nothing to do with the IEP. Or the student just didn't do anything. So now you're, you know, didn't make an attempt to do that. But now you're stringing out that group. Now, everybody knows, I'm talking about other students, everybody knows, those kids are coming free because they have an IEP. How many parents do you think are going to get a call from, hey, how come I can't come free?
Well, I don't know if they would know if this particular student's on an IEP.
You're right, you're right, Mr. Aguirre, they don't know now. But they will know if you label them as a group and say, you can come free.
I was going to add that, I think the individual nature of evaluating this on an individual basis makes sense to me initially, based on ability to pay as well as the need for the program. So we addressed the notification issue, I think that's something that's important, that's for all students. You need to notify them well in advance, and we'll leave it up to the administration to figure out how to do that. But when it comes to an IEP, I would imagine that if we look at it on a very individual basis, there can be a lot of different reasons, as you said, why a particular student isn't successful in a class. Some could be related to accommodations or effective implementation of those accommodations during a given class, in which case you might want to consider, well, you know, this IEP plan did not work for them or this might be an issue or... I think that as long as we're not creating a barrier for them to...
Those are all things that have to be done with, you're telling that student, we have an extended school year, which is a totally different thing. Those things have to be done. They have to have a team, and the team has to recommend. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about somebody at the end of June finds out, they'll, math and science, you need to go to summer school. Well, summer school's not the extended school year. I don't know anything about their student's IEP and summer school director. All I know is that they're coming to summer school to take this.
Can I, what is, what is the enrollment in summer school?
It varies year to year. I think it's safe to say 175 students.
Okay. And do we have any sense of what percentage of students that would be eligible or need to make up course that represents, what?
Students with disabilities?
No, we're talking about 175 students attending summer school. And how many would be, who would have a need to attend? What I'm trying to assess is, is that a substantial percentage of the students? Or is that less than 50% of the students who have failed a course and would need to make it up in the school year?
Oh, that's all the students who attend, are those students who failed classes and then need to make up the work?
Right, but how many don't? How many, how many make it up the following school year or don't make it up at all?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, I'll tell you how, the guidance will know that because they would know how many letters they sent out. Then I know, when I get all the registration, I give guidance a list of every student who signed up for summer school and what they took. I don't know how many letters they sent out, but in my discussions with Mr. Poison after this happens, he'll say, oh, I've got X number of kids who didn't go to summer school. I said, well...
Mr. Aguirre, in what subjects do you offer classes in summer school?
Almost all, English, history, social studies, science, different sciences, different math.
No, but science, social studies, English, math, the four majors, word language?
I also follow language, I didn't give you... That's because you told me I was early on the agenda, and you just did that to keep me here. There were some classes, this is your question, Superintendent, there were some classes we do only if it's sufficient in order. Sometimes we do follow language, sometimes we don't.
Right, we don't have...
And I don't set up a follow language class because I could get three French kids and three Spanish kids and two Portuguese kids. Well, I can't put them all in one class. Maybe, you know, the Portuguese, Spanish, I may be able to... So some summers I do have a follow language class or a combination of follow language, some not. I very rarely have, if ever have an art class. We put physics in years ago, they made physics a requirement for graduation. It doesn't happen, nobody fails physics.
Are there IEPs that transfer into summer school? That's what I'm wondering.
Here's the next thing, the judge will...
I'm just asking that question.
A student's IEP has no impact, has no effect on summer school. The summer school is not obligated by law to follow an IEP. It's a voluntary program. So the student who has an IEP, fails math, that IEP is not affecting them summer. Now, that doesn't mean we don't address that student's needs. What it means is, we are not bound by that IEP. So you've got a situation where they say, student fails class, has an IEP, we want him to go to summer school. You're asking me at five weeks with no IEP, no special accommodations, to do what their IEP said they were going to do in a year and didn't do it?
Right, in summer school, you don't have any specialized staff.
Correct.
We don't have paraprofessionals, we don't have specialized teachers.
Correct.
And so what happens? So they take the class in the summer, they pass an exam, and then that counts as credit so they don't have to repeat in the following year?
Yeah, so if a student received a 62 average in introductory physics at the end of their regular school year, takes it and passes, then their transcript will reflect that they received a grade. I think it just goes to the minimum passing grade, it goes 65.
That passing grade is summer school.
So you're not bound to honor an IEP in the summer school? I'm just trying to figure this out. But yet, the credit that they generate in that class goes onto their official transcript based on whatever they get in that class, but yet the IEP...
Had nothing to do with passing, correct. Here's what happens, for all schools that will get the specific IEP, student has to get maybe a 70 or better in summer school to pass. I turn in the grades, I have nothing to do with their credit. I turn in their grades to guidance for all the schools. Guidance then makes the adjustment. Okay, he got a 70 in English, we change his 65 or 60 to the next, to a 7. Or in this case, they change it, let's say he got a 60, they change it to a 65, which gives him a D minus, which is credit passing. Whether he still has an IEP or not, that's what happens. So the student with the IEP changes from 62 to 65 instead of an F, he has a D minus, gets a six credits. The IEP had nothing to do with passing that class.
Okay, so has the, has the special ed director looked at this?
She has.
And what, what's her view?
Her, her recommendation is that students with disabilities, if they are failing a class and they, and they choose to take summer school for private recovery, then they should be paying as everyone else does. The policy, the, the practice that Mr. Iger has been following.
As long as they can afford it.
As long as they can afford it. If they can't afford it, then Mr. Iger.
And do you concur in that view?
I do, because there are, there are a number of situations. You can have a student with an IEP with, with goals that are addressing, say, just math. And they're failing social studies. The reason why they have an IEP has nothing to do with their reason for failing social studies or English or something like that. You may have an IEP for a vision problem or, or, you know, something like that. That's not going, the reason why you failed math is not due to your disability. You know, there are modifications that we made, that we make in class, assistive technology, things like that for a student with vision problems. But the vision problems, unless we are not providing that student with the tools that they need to access the curriculum. That's not the cause of the student failing. So you may have a student with an IEP with speech services only or OT. That's not going to address it. So there are some where you have a student with a reading comprehension problem and that IEP has goals related to that and that student fails English. Or social studies, so, you know, really any subject, if you have a reading comprehension difficulty. But, so there may be a link there, but it's not a blanket statement where you can just say, you have an IEP and therefore you should never fail a class because you have an IEP and we'll pay for summer school if you do.
And that's why I say you don't need to call it a shift to that kind of movement finances.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And that's why I asked if they had even, they could do accommodations within summer school. But so those accommodations are something totally separate.
That's the extended school year for that particular student, which you have to provide in that summer school.
All right, well, then what we're talking about is a status quo, so we really don't need to take any action on this, on this issue at this time.
I would, I would like to hear though, if there is a way that the administration can work on addressing the notification delay. Because that, I think affects all students.
I, I am sure there's probably a report in Aspen, a report that we can generate that will just get emailed directly to the parents at the end of the third quarter. And still, it's, it's an email notification, it's still up to the parent to check, enroll, read, read the email and so on.
I wonder, here, and I only say this because you're talking about the new criteria and I'm wondering if. Nothing comes without cost, but I'm wondering if we should have, we should be thinking of some sort of counseling program more than just, more than just an email for, for students that are at risk because it's going to be, they're, they're going to be in our bottom 25% cohort. So I just, I just raise that as a possibility. I know, you know, putting more burdens on administrators, we talked about notices, other types of notices for absenteeism and we were told that it's an administrative nightmare, but. Providing, providing some sort of information in the letter about, you know, the need, the need to address this issue and. You know, making the possibility of graduation more difficult and that we have a summer program and that we try to address situations where there is an affordability issue and just try to encourage participation. Just a thought. Okay, so. So at this point, I would like to recognize our February Students of the Month. Tiara Marie Camon in Engineering and Technology. Madison Charette in Science. Thomas Dorrett in Wellness. Esther Gonzales in Mathematics. Mackenzie Hill in Music. Caitlin Jankowski in World Language. Samantha Quartz in Fine Arts. Taylor Lundquist in Social Studies. Liam Martin in Business Technology. And Connor Smith in English. And our March Students of the Month, Nicholas Abaka, Social Studies. Joanna Bernaba, World Language. Sydney Boland, Wellness. Catherine Batello in Music. Madison Gonzales in Fine Arts. Rory McCombe, Business and Technology. Leah Ravino McGee in English. Elizabeth Orlando in Science. Joshua Rigo in Engineering Technology. And Jared Silverman in Mathematics. Now, we have our minutes. The first set of minutes are the open session minutes of March 7th.
Just one minor change, says that I got there at 8:40, I got there at 6:40. I was late, I just wasn't quite there.
So March 7th. And you said you arrived at what time, Mr. Larabee?
Open session, March 7th.
8:47. That says Mr. Giliducci.
I left.
Yeah, he left. I got there at 6:40. I was late, I was a bad person, but I wasn't that bad of a person.
6:40. You were a few moments late.
I was, yes. But we went until after 11:00.
So with the one change to correct Mr. Larabee's arrival time to 6:40 PM, I'll entertain a motion to approve the joint open session minutes of March 17, 2018. Did I say March 17? Oh, I said 17, I was thinking of St. Patrick's Day, I guess. Of March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
But those are actually the minutes that we're talking about, Dean. These are the joint open session minutes, which are the third on the, on the list.
Oh.
Oh, Dean.
This is sorry. This is very important. So we're talking about the open session minutes of March 7th, 2018. And Mr. Giliducci left at 8:45.
Sir, I was there.
I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstained.
Okay, for that statement. Next, executive session minutes of March 17th.
Seven.
March, March 7th, sorry. Executive session, okay. This is the executive session that was called to order at 11:00 PM. Correct. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? The absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
King.
Now, next is the joint open session minutes of March 7th. Those are the minutes where Mr. Larabee arrived at 6:40 PM. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes with that one change.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larabee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next is joint executive session minutes of March 7th. These minutes, there were a couple of minor corrections which, which have been highlighted. So I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes as modified.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by, I'm sorry, motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, open session minutes of March 15th. There are, there is a correction on page one of these minutes. On page three, which was, feel the editorial change to add an S to topics. So I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes as modified.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larabee. And again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, executive session minutes of March 15th. There are no changes to those minutes as circulated. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session of March 15th.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi. Any discussion? The absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, open session minutes of March 22nd. There are a couple of questions. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes with the highlighted modifications.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? The absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And finally, the joint executive session minutes of March 22nd.
So moved.
There is, there are a few modifications to these minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve these minutes as modified.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any discussion? The absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now, Robin, I think there, there is a set of executive session minutes that have not yet been approved. So can we check into that and put them on the next agenda? Right, there are no matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of meeting. Action items for future meetings, some of which we did discuss.
Is there any sense in us having a little longer conversation about the copy machine situation and the fact that, that we seem to have a mismatch between our usage and machines we're utilizing? I know that that wasn't carrying budget to allow for replacement of those items, but a $4,000 repair bill is likely not to shrink. Especially if we have, you know, machines that just do not meet our needs. So I don't know if that's something we want to take up in this committee or budget or, but I think it's something we should probably look at.
I think we would like, perhaps by saying that we'd like to have a report on where the high school stands on a plan to go paperless. I mean, I, I think Mrs. Field will agree with this. There, there was specific discussion at the building committee, technology subcommittee meetings about the number of copiers that we would buy and the capacity of the copiers that we would buy. Premised specifically on the fact that the high school would, within a matter of a couple of years, implement a paperless plan to substantially reduce the amount of copying of paper that would be done.
Yes, in fact, when we were looking at the infrastructure, because it was unique to this building here, part of the rationale that was presented to us, and I know that this precedes everybody. But part of the rationale that was presented to make that shift to this type of infrastructure was the cost savings we were going to have on copying. And so that's, that was part of the decision-making process when we decided to go with this type of infrastructure here at the high school, so.
And I, I've actually seen emails and I, you know, they're, they're just, they're just marketing emails, but there, there are actually entities out there that present, present a plan.
A plan on how to go paperless.
To how to go paperless. So, and, you know, looking at the stack of paper in front of me, I acknowledge that I'm one of the worst offenders. You know, but, you know, I have, I have to have my arm twisted in order to comply.
We have a device for you, I think.
I actually have a device.
Yes.
We did understand during the process that there was, that we weren't going to be able to go completely paperless. So I, I do want to say that it's more of the concept of it than, than going completely paperless.
But if I can just add with that, and as Mr. Larabee said, we could certainly have a longer, more involved conversation at some other point. I still remember the first summer I came into this building. So it wasn't the first summer we were here, but it was really the summer of 2015. And I remember looking down all of these stacks of shelves and it was set by homeroom and each, each homeroom had a pile of paper about this high. That no longer exists. But that was the first summer we were here and most of that has now been made electronic. Just recently, working with Andrea Smith in our central office, our Aspen data specialist, we just converted two more notification forms through Aspen. So we will no longer send home any paper reports, they're going to be email notifications for, for different things. That's why I'm thinking that the, getting back to the quarter three failures, probably wouldn't be too difficult of a task. But we just, in the past month or so, converted two more forms to paperless. Report cards are now through Aspen. We used to print and mail those home. So we have, we, we keep making those efforts to reduce paper. We're not there yet and I, I will fully admit that we're not where we, where we can be. But it's still, you know, on the student side, most of the paper is not through the main office. Most of the paper is teacher to student, student to teacher. And we've had, we've been a one-to-one district for about 20 weeks and that's all it is, about 20 school weeks. That's going to take some time for everyone, you know, to really get, get a good grasp on how to share information without photocopying and handing that paper. on how to share information without photocopying and handing that paper.
So we had a professional development day just this past week and our primary focus were a variety of apps that would help to enhance instruction, but what it also does is it takes away much of the need for paper. So if those are, those are some of the things that we are actively exploring and looking at, again, it takes some time to build some of that and to really shift what you were doing in the classroom, it's not a matter of just, well, you know, well, I sent it to you, just go read it on your device. And you know, in, in all fairness, there are kids that will talk about their preference to have something in their hand in addition, but we could, you know, we can continue to look at, you know, on a need-to-need basis and, you know, how they might be able to kind of find a happy medium, but we've looked at a variety of applications, Nearpod, Pairdeck are, are two that a, a lot of the teachers are using or, or trying. Lexia was here, we had Storyboard That, which is another application. So again, we're, we're moving in that direction, it's twenty weeks, it seems like we've had the devices a really long time, it really has not been very long at all. And, and teachers are making a concerted effort and when we prepared for the professional learning day, one of the things that they talked about, the content coordinators and teachers talked about was really digitizing and not just, you know, scanning it and putting it in, being able to really heighten the, the effectiveness of a variety of applications and including the Google Suite and some of those other things. Highlander came in actually and did a, a beginning module, three modules actually, intermediate and advanced, so no matter where our teachers were, they had some choices and could try a variety of different tools and our last session was a playground, so they could go and really do some hands-on and do some development and during common planning time, they're able to continue that work. So we are making progress toward that, and again, twenty weeks is not long at all to, to have such vast access and be able to digitize.
So maybe to address Mr. Larrabee's point is that, you know, in the short term, we, we saw some cost shifting that we had to do for photocopying, maybe we don't make those long-term lease decisions, but we do the short-term things as we start to migrate away from.
You know, the, being in the business world, and I'm sure that you, you've experienced this yourself too, having an older copier that's in, in need of constant repair is like having an old car.
Right.
You know, every year that goes by that you just keep trying to milk it, you're just going to end up with a larger and larger cost all the time. And you're certainly, that, that's counterproductive from both a budgetary standpoint and also from an education standpoint, if your copy machine's constantly down, you know, there's certain things you needed to do for you and, and certainly we want to, I, I don't want to make it a huge, you know, long conversation, but it, it may be worth just taking a look at and see if there's some sort of a way to, to rectify the situation.
We are, we are going to have a budget meeting coming up in the near future that we got bought, so we could put that on the agenda.
Okay, I should do that, Robin. So, is there any public input? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A four, to discuss the employment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, and also pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining between the Somerset Teachers Association, Units A and B, and with the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Professional and Cafeteria Units, because an open session will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, that is, our school committee and the Chair so declares. Committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larrabee, any discussion? In the absence, in, well, in terms of discussion, I would just like to say, I will be participating in the portion of the executive session related to security and negotiations with the Somerset Teachers Association, I will not be participating in that part of the executive session related to collective bargaining with the AFSCME units. And I understand that Mrs. Field will not be participating in the portion of the executive session related to the Somerset Teachers Association negotiations. So, roll call, vote. Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Larrabee?
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliardi?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you everyone for coming.